I'll call this meeting Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Uh, roll call please, Ms. Shaw.
Tralka. Leyland.
Here.
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 Little.
Here.
Short.
Here. Uh, please join us for a moment to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll first entertain the motion on the agenda received as well.
Someone.
Second. And I'll note that, um, item four D will be, um, presentation of the disciplinary sources will be next week instead. Um, it has been moved and seconded. All of those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the agenda is approved. Next we will move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the room or on Zoom, um, that would like to make a public comment at this time, please state your name and address. Alright, hearing none, we will move on to the Years of Service Award to employees with twenty or more years of service.
We have three, um, with twenty years of service, all from the Sheriff's Department. Stephen Paulson, Matthew Drucker, and Corinne Amen.
And if you'd like to say a few words, you're certainly welcome to. Well, we thank all three of you for your dedication to Blackhawk County and to serving, uh, the citizens and residents of our community. It's much appreciated. Alright, next we will move on to Presentation Department, uh, Highlights from two thousand and twenty-four. Um, first up is General Assistance.
Good morning, Colleen, General Assistance.
Good morning.
First, I just want to thank the Board of Supervisors for giving the departments a chance to share some of their accomplishments. I just think that's really nice of them to take the time to do that. And I want to thank you for the continued support of the General Assistance Program. Also, a big thanks goes out to Gabby. I think one of the biggest accomplishments and cool things of the whole year for all of us is the new Blackhawk County branding launch. And she did a lot of work to help me get everything switched over for General Assistance, so I just really appreciate that. And then our biggest accomplishment day to day is just to keep up with the request for basic needs for rent, utilities, substance abuse mittles, prescriptions, water, funeral services and cremation, bus tickets, and any homeless situations that arise. What I take most pride in for sure is our partnerships with Blackhawk, or, or the partnerships that Blackhawk County has with Eastside Ministerial Alliance, Jesse Caspi and Operation Threshold. We are in our twenty-first year of that, and I just think that's pretty amazing to keep that going that long. And they just do a great job every day. And it's just, they are just a huge piece of the puzzle in the distribution of the rent utility funds for Blackhawk County. I just strongly feel that the partnership has gotten stronger each year and it just continues to grow. And they are definitely a very big part of the accomplishment in everything that we do for General Assistance. And really what they do entails a whole lot more than what our statistics show. Whenever I visit their offices, their phone just ring nonstop and there's just constant traffic. So I just give them all the credit in the world for that. On an average, between the three agencies, they have five to six employees that deal with the distribution of the county funds. So that's just a lot of people that are, they just put a lot of time into that. The biggest hurdle for sure, um, and accomplishment for the agencies in two thousand and twenty-four was between July and September. And Michelle can relate, know what I'm talking about there. They were seeing between seventy and seventy people a week for intakes. A lot of that was because Operation Threshold ran completely out of all utility funds. The only funds that they had available were the county funds, so just grateful that those were available for the clients that needed those at the time. The meeting that I enjoy most each year is, once a year I have an agency meeting where we all come together. And that's just a really nice opportunity. We work together closely every single day, but for all of us to come together, that's just a really nice thing that we do. A big thing of the General Assistance Program is just the communication and the relationships that we all build together. We just work very hard at establishing and maintaining the relationships between all the hospitals, landlords, utility companies, funeral homes, all within Blackhawk County. And building those relationships just goes a really long ways in figuring out how to get the assistance for a client in a timely manner. And then we just do a lot more than just assist clients with basic needs. The information and referral piece is just as important as being able to pay something towards a client's basic needs. I'm a firm believer that answering your phone, listening to what a client needs and returning phone calls should be our number one priority. And agencies just try to do their best at that. And if it does get overwhelming at times, there's no doubt about that. But I do receive lots of feedback from clients and agencies, so I think we can feel really good about that. Some of the things that I've been involved, involved with in two thousand and twenty-four I have been Put the Homeless in Your Heart Walk, Blackhawk County Housing Coalition, Poverty Situation Training, Resource Luncheon in Lincoln Park, Emergency Room Shelter, Jesse Caspi Thanksgiving Luncheon, Funding Center Open House, Homeless Coordinating Board Meetings, Point in Time Survey, Advancing Equity in the Cedar Valley, Redemptive Compassion Conference, UAW informational meetings, and landlord tenant meetings. I do try to attend as many meetings and conferences as possible, but really my main priority is being present for the day-to-day operations of the General Assistance Program. The second, um, or the first set of pictures are some that Gabby captured of the Resource Luncheon at Lincoln Park. There was just a really good turnout for both agencies and individuals attending. The second picture is from Put the Homeless in Your Heart Walk. I was just very impressed with the turnout for the first year. And I believe they want to make this an annual event. What warmed my heart most about that was the young college students that were involved. And then this just, um, this slide just shows how many individuals we did assist, and this is for fiscal year twenty-four. So we assisted thirty-three individuals with substance abuse, one thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine with rent utilities, bus tickets, medications, eighty-six families with funeral services, cremation, fifty-nine individuals with first month's rents that were in a homeless situation, and forty-three homeless individuals with short-term motels until they got homeless shelter or secured permanent housing. I worked very closely with the Hospitality House, Salvation Army, and People's Community Health Clinic Outreach Program. They're just all real beneficial in what we do also through the General Assistance Program. The biggest change I made in the overall process is that we have standardized the General Assistance application. Through the agencies, they all used to just have their own applications that they, um, had the clients fill out and they don't do audits. Now they have them all fill out the same application and they submit those to me daily before I even determine the eligibility. So that's been a really nice clean change. Nothing real big and exciting for accomplishments in two thousand and twenty-four, but what we do daily is try to assist those in need. And that is really what I consider the biggest accomplishment that we do each day. I really couldn't be happier with how the General Assistance Program is run by, as a whole. And everything continues to run smoothly. And that's about it. Any questions?
You mentioned the meeting that you meet with the orgs, all of them together. Is that kind of a celebration of all the work you've done, or is that a discussion, or?
Um, we just kind of go over the policy to make sure we're still all on this stage celebration. I just always have food and it's just fun.
Do you do that like holiday time of year or something?
Usually, um, right before the new fiscal year, so June.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks for all the work.
Excellent work this year, Colleen.
Thank you.
Great to see it on the presentation too, some of it. You know, there's some of the things you do, but when you actually see the list.
Yeah, they're, I mean, they are busy. I mean, I think that, I think they'd probably welcome you to come, even just sit with them for an hour sometime and just kind of see what they do. Because it is pretty, it's crazy.
Well, twenty-one years and you've done a good job, I said, for those twenty-one of those services. So I imagine now you get good numbers of people just wanting your help.
Yeah, yep. Dig that up there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Elections with Karen Shaw.
I do not have a PowerPoint, but we have several accomplishments. Um, speaking on behalf of both Elections and the Auditor's Office, uh, we continue to provide excellent services to citizens and internal county customers while undergoing the disruptive and comprehensive office remodel project. Conducted another complicated general election in a way that strengthened public confidence in the electoral process. Effectively administered a record number of voters through the in-person absentee process with our new space down in the basement. Successfully completed implementation of a new payroll system. Regularly provided other counties with useful information on the Auditor's Base Camp Platform, which benefited both new and veteran county officials across the state. And the Auditor's Office scanned and digitized the property transfer books, making more than a hundred and fifty years of records available online.
I heard nothing but good reports back on the experience for in-person early voting this year. You know, the state legislature cut that forty days to twenty days, and so, um, you brought us a plan and it worked and very pleased with it.
Thank you. Um, just to put that in comparison, the highest number of voters we've ever processed in a single day here is nine hundred, which we did the Monday before the two thousand and twenty general election, which if anybody was here in the building, that's when we had lines down the hall, down the stairs, and wrapped around the building. And for this general election, that was our average. We saw at least nine hundred people every day. The light, the highest number we saw was thirteen hundred, and we never reached the stairs. So it was, it was great.
Very good.
Yep.
Busy place downstairs though.
Very busy place, but democracy in action. Thank you.
Alright, next up is, uh, Treasure and Linda.
Good morning, Board, Linda Hensman, Treasure. When being asked to reflect on our office accomplishments or changes for two thousand and twenty-four, many things have come to mind. Personnel is number one. I'm excited to say our retirements have slowed down after many years of service. We only had three retire this year and a couple of non-retirement turnovers. For this movement, we have hired three new personnel to our office this year. With these changes, it has allowed additional re-construkturing, um, and cross-training to be done. We were also able to promote internally for a supervisory position due to one of the retirements. During this year's budget, we will be looking to organize our supervisory positions vertically versus horizontally to better provide support to frontline staff and customers. Office remodel. In anticipation of our office remodel, we have been working with maintenance and information technology, IT, departments in anticipation of our move to our temporary space in the basement for the next several months. So we're getting excited, we're gearing up, we've been cleaning. Um, actually just met with those two, uh, departments yesterday to kind of get a better idea of what our timing looks like. Um, starting to let the personnel, the staff know, start taking your personal items home, start getting everything ready, so when that day comes and they tell us to move, we're ready to go. Hopefully that goes smooth. We have also been working on reviewing our records we have in our current office space as well as in the basement. We have reached out to our external auditors as well as ISAC for record retention guidance, guidance. We have purchased several desk scanners during fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four to make a concerted effort to scan as much as possible to reduce storage and minimize the usage, usage of our paper. Our goal is to go paperless as much as possible. As a result of our efforts so far, we've been able to empty many cabinets and desks. So hopefully moving forward, we'll continue to, to, you know, scan everything in, but going backwards to reduce what we've been storing as paper for the past. Our keying system, in August, we signed a contract with no way to sign. We've been working with the vendor to customize the system to meet the needs of our office and customers. With IT's assistance, we have acquired two kiosks and other equipments needed. We decided to use our dealer customers as our pilot project. This has allowed us to do some testing and make adjustments to the system before we roll it out to all customers. We worked with Gabby to prepare a flyer with a Q car, QR code that will allow dealers to, that is actually allowing dealers to schedule appointments. And then that way they can give us feedback on what's working, what should we kind of tweak, what's going to work better for our office and the public moving forward. Um, so we're hoping to have that, um, up and going fairly soon. We're hoping to be a little further along. Um, their main person with their company actually left them as we were signing on. So, um, we do have a new person on their end that is learning basically along with us, which is going very well, it's just a little slower than what we had anticipated. Fraud investigation. We are trained and work with our Iowa DOT, or Iowa Department of Transportation, Iowa DOT investigators, to recognize and stop fraudulent activities. As we process title transfers, we are responsible for reaching out to that Iowa DOT to let them know if something doesn't look right, which is becoming more and more on our end. You may have seen in the news article, our most recent vague activity was on October twenty-sixth. We were alerted that two unknown suspects were probably making their way to us with five Califor, with five fake California titles. We were provided with a picture of the two individuals prior to their arrivals, so we could watch for them. We followed instructions on how they were to be handled and what they needed from us to be able to process this case as needed. The Treasurer's Office staff, staff did an amazing job. Not only how we handled themselves, or the staff handled themselves, by having our deputies on standby to be able to proceed and eventually arrest them. Since January, our office has processed over thirty thousand two hundred and twenty title transfers. We also held our annual tax sale on Monday, June seventeenth. We had over three thousand two hundred and three bidders. We offered one thousand one hundred and thirty-two parcels, and we had only one hundred and twenty-two parcels that didn't sell at that time. Those proceedings help us as a county to be able to do our dispersments each month to all of the county entities so that they can continue to do their services as planned. On August seventh, our vendor mailed out our property tax statements. We mailed out a total of seventy thousand one hundred and seventy-three, which included sixty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-six real estate and one thousand seven hundred and forty-seven mo, mobile homes. On November fourth, we processed and mailed three thousand two hundred and sixty-one property tax reminders slash delete what notices. So for me, that was a lot, but the county as a whole, to me, actually does a pretty good job considering we mailed out over seventy thousand statements. We also provide, um, forms for our low income. We currently have four hundred and sixty-four that qualify for real estate, low income credit, and we have over thirty that qualify for mobile home, low income credits. Two thousand and twenty-four has been a great but busy year, and we look forward to two thousand and twenty-five. Questions or?
Thank you, I especially appreciate your efforts on personnel. I know that's been a, a big thing last couple of years, so.
It's been a challenge.
Yeah.
Um, but I am happy to say we have a great staff. It's, it's so, it's been so refreshing to have the view between our older seasoned people and our new view of people coming in and being able to see everybody work together as a whole. It just kind of brings a whole new view and vibrant thing to our whole office. So it's been exciting and scary, new, all at the same time.
Well, you mentioned this, the restructure and like I say, cross-training that you're doing, getting that so much before, so even that should be helpful.
Yeah, we, we, I just kind of want to make sure that, um, if we have a staff member that's gone for a day or a week, that we're not putting that customer on hold going, oh, I'm sorry, this person's gone, they only handle this. Um, so trying to continue to make sure that everyone is cross-trained, so that if that does happen, we're not putting the customer on hold at that time, that we're able to professionally still move forward with what they need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to your restructure down there too, as far as remodeling.
Yeah, yeah, I'm.
Big change.
I'm excited, nervous.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be well worth it.
But for customer service, yeah.
Yeah.
And next up, uh, is Veterans Affairs with Yolanda Lovas.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning, Board.
Yolanda Lovas, Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs. Hopefully I got it right. Uh, today I'm dressed like Mike Trainor.
I was just gonna say, I love that suit.
As far as her.
I think before, uh, Grant leaves, I'm gonna wear a bowtie and a cape for you so that, uh, we can remember, uh, Grant and, uh, the great things that he has done.
He's only got one meeting left.
He's only got one, so I gotta wear it next week. Uh, I'll try to figure out something to breathe, so I'll wear it next week. But what an honor it is to come before you, um, also to have Colonel Cough who's here as a representative for us. Um, and we do appreciate our commission because they do keep us on our toes. Um, and then there was just one thing that I wanted to point out was this year, the, the VA opened up where they work on Saturdays. And, uh, so I worked a couple of Saturdays helping veterans. In fact, I worked Friday helping a veteran and his wife file claims because, uh, they couldn't get off work at a particular time. So, um, we made that accessible. I don't make my staff make that accessible because that's overtime for them. But I just made it accessible for us to meet the needs that the VA is doing, uh, in that standpoint.
Yolanda, is that done, and as they contact you and you try to set up something for another day, but it just doesn't work?
Right.
Okay.
So a lot of times it happens on the appeal process where they gotta go before trial judge, and the elderly doesn't have the, um, video equipment that they need, so we provide it so that they can do the video conferencing right from our office, in that standpoint.
Thank you.
But again, uh, our, everything that we do is subject around our mission statement, which is if we're not making what we're, um, what we visualize and we read every day, then we're not doing our job. So our job is to assist veterans and their dependents in the needs in which they are entitled. So hopefully you'll see that throughout. Um, but I do want to welcome aboard, uh, Todd, um, Anne, uh, Sarah. They replaced Heidi and the great things that Heidi and, uh, Mary did. Um, we lost some continuity there. Ten years of continuity on the right-hand side and brand new on the right, on the left-hand side. Uh, one positive thing about, uh, Commissioner Todd is he has completed the training that's required for a commissioner. I just completed that training in October, so all five of our commissioners have the state-required training done in that standpoint. We'll be looking for Sarah to get her training done going into two thousand and twenty-five. Some of our successes from January to November, uh, donation-wise, again, it was another great year of the community coming and showing support for Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs. We took in, in eleven months already, about twenty thousand dollars in, uh, donations that will help support, um, veteran causes, uh, in that standpoint. And, uh, you could see also for the trust fund that the state provides to help us, help veterans get their car repaired, their home repaired. Uh, there's eighty thousand dollars in dispersments to various veterans who, throughout the Blackhawk County area. And then lastly, the expenditures, uh, just recently, as you know, we do our, 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 uh, support of our veterans. And so we had forty veterans who we provided gift cards and nominations of fifty and a hundred dollars, depending on if they were single, if they had family, and so we had two thousand dollars out of the donated funds to give back to the veterans. Uh, we're looking at doing that again for Christmas. Also for our surviving spouses, every year we provide, um, gift cards to the surviving spouses who lost their, uh, loved ones throughout the year. And that's become a good success. We get a lot of good feedback, um, reminding them that, uh, they're not by themselves. And then you can see the retro pay, uh, in eleven months, our staff is doing a tremendous job. A lot of that is because of the PAC Act, which creates the delays because there's influx of claims. So when the VA does process it, it may be six or seven months late, but the VA pays back to the date of the claim. So that's how that retro pay, um, substantiates itself a little bit. And then some of our outreach, uh, you can see some of the things that we do. Uh, in particular this year, we, we put another focus on our, uh, assisted living, our, um, our elderly resident areas, making sure that we kind of hit those areas, again, reminding those, uh, veterans and surviving spouses in those particular, uh, residents that, hey, we are still here to support you. And by chance, if you need anything as far as pension claim, uh, in that standpoint, we're there in that standpoint. So we are, uh, participating in, and these are just some of the highlights. Uh, we reestablished our relationship with Ravenwood Nursing Home. And so that's another thing to reestablish. They had, we had, uh, since COVID, we, we've gotten away from that, but we're reestablishing our nurse, uh, veteran, uh, opportunities, uh, out at Ravenwood. And you can see some of the other various places that we've had. Uh, some of our special events, um, again, we had an opportunity to host the District Three. Uh, there's about eleven counties that came in and did some training, uh, in that standpoint. Uh, I do take honor in the Elmwood Cemetery Headstone Dedication. I worked with the Daughters of American Republic, uh, and, uh, we got eleven headstones that were veterans who did not have a headstone out of Elmwood. Uh, now they are, um, marked, and now, uh, their families that are still here can now, uh, celebrate that in that standpoint. One thing that I have in this picture is that's me and my mom. And what the Sheriff Tony Thompson and the Sheriff Department did was they recognized, uh, some of the history of Blackhawk County Sheriff Department. And then that picture kind of displays, uh, someone that's very special and near to, dear to me, and that's my dad. Uh, he served the county in nineteen seventy-two as a deputy sheriff. And I'm just thankful that Ned and all those guys that, you guys took the opportunity to emulate that in the show, uh, some of the history. Uh, and the reason I bring that up is because, you know, with DEI, they're, they're getting rid of the history. And I'm just glad that you guys captured that history, so thank you for that in that standpoint. Some of our client support, uh, you can see some of the numbers there. Um, when you look at the totality of it though, you look at about two thousand and eleven veterans and surviving spouses receiving about three point four million in VA monthly compensation, uh, in that standpoint. So, um, some of those numbers are down from last year, uh, when we look at comparative with, uh, two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-three. Um, but some of that is added that when the CBOC moved and reestablished themselves on university, the state put another C, CVSO in, at the CBOC. So now that Veteran Service Officer is helping, uh, we're doing claims as the veterans are, uh, completing their scheduled appointments. And also down at the hospital in Iowa City, there's three Veteran Service Officers there. So we're working together in tandem, uh, to help not just Blackhawk County, but the various counties surrounding us. So that's why some of our numbers are down, because we are sharing that. And then the last couple of things I want to show was some of the highlights of this year was we had an opportunity to see, uh, Kamada, uh, Jacobson come in and, uh, and talk to us and tell us all the great things that he's doing at the Iowa Department of Veterans Affairs, uh, the Iowa Home and the Iowa Cemetery. So it was great that, uh, that was, some of that was based off of Colonel Cough's coordination. But to get him in our, um, monthly meetings, it was an opportunity there. And then, uh, what we did for Valentine's Day, um, you can see what we expended to, um, this makes my heart feels warm when you're interacting and, uh, they show that love, that, hey, um, it's an opportunity where Michelle and Stacy went out and showed love to our elderly veterans that are in some of our nursing care facilities. Then the last thing, uh, is something that, uh, also is near, dear to me. Uh, these two brothers, they were twin brothers, uh, who lived on, uh, Adam Street, not Adam Street, but Beach Street. And I grew up on Beach Street. Uh, but to know that these two twin brothers, uh, served on the USS Hole and, uh, went down, um, on the same ship and died, uh, pretty much the same day, similar to the Sullivan Brothers, uh, but to know that Waterloo Cedar Valley has a rich history of heroes who, uh, went above and beyond and made the ultimate sacrifice. So I just wanted to bring that out. And I remember still throwing apples at Saint Mary's Catholic School, um, because I went to Logan. And, uh, Mike, don't take offense to that, but, uh, in that standpoint. But just standing by to address any questions of concern, but really, special thanks to, uh, experienced Waterloo with us, uh, partnering with, helping out with the, um, Warriors Expedition where we hosted seven, um, veterans who rode their bikes from Washington's, the Washington DC all the way to Washington State. Tavis and his group helped us support that by providing, um, the accommodations for them in that standpoint. Also the maintenance department, Rory, uh, and his great staff helping us out there. Michelle, we couldn't do anything without you, so thank you in that standpoint. Uh, HR, uh, was helping us fulfill those two requirements that we had. Um, and then lastly, um, Gabby and the great things that she's doing, um, and. That, that thankful, that thankful slide right there, it's all her work. And she's been doing great things and helping us promote our office in a better way. So again, I just, there's a lot of things that I could give the board supervisors all the way around, right? Every department within our county makes our county successful. But these are the ones this year who made our job easier and made us able to be successful throughout the county help of veterans. But standing by to address any other questions or concerns that you may have.
Really excellent work, as always. We're lucky to have you.
Is that good?
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to claims and payments. This is resolution with approval expenditures, that the county auditor be authorized to issue payments against a various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
Should've moved and seconded, is we do?
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is two hundred four thousand, six hundred twenty-two dollars and fourteen cents. One of the lower ones we've had because of the short week, I think. And we also paid out of the sixty forty fund, two thousand, one hundred fourteen dollars and forty-eight cents. And there really were no, no unusual or significant payments this week. Everything appears to be in order.
Any questions, Board? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Roll call, please, Ms. Scholwenger.
Leyland.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
And Schwartz.
Yes, resolution is approved. Next, we'll receive project updates from department heads and local officials.
Good morning, Board, Kathy Nicholas Engineer. So winter has arrived here in Blackhawk County. The paved road system is clear today. I just wanted to take a few minutes to reiterate to yourselves and the public some of our winter operations at this point. Before we get too far into winter, we recently met with the Sheriff's Office, Sheriff-elect, Aitneff, and his staff, and so many of them are new. So just to update you, we typically run our winter operations, go from five AM to five PM. We just have one crew. We do not have a night crew like the Iowa DOT does. If an ambulance is, is on call in the middle of the night or a fire engine and they get stuck, they need our assistance from a snowplow or they need some sand put down, et cetera, we are definitely going to be out there. We have an on-call person, we just need to be called and we will be there. However, if the whole entire county is slippery and there are slick spots, snow is falling, we will wait until five AM and then our crews will be out there at five AM to a five PM. If the wind is blowing steadily and the visibility is very poor, we may be pulling our plows for a time. So that's typically being advertised on TV stations, radio stations. We wanna keep our, our staff safe. For the gravel road system, according to our ordinance, we, once the snow is falling, has stopped falling, then we will be out plowing on the gravel road system. The ordinance states that residents should allow forty-eight hours for our crews to get around, for our motor grader crews to get around. We, a lot of times, we can get that done in one day, it just, you know, depends on the amount of snow. And then if there is poor visibility on the gravel roads, if it's blowing very poor visibility, we will pull those graders off as well because we're just wasting fuel like that one that's blowing back in right behind us. So, and lastly, just allow additional time for residents to get to their destinations and give our snowplows plenty of room, whether it's a county plow or a DOT plow. Can I answer any questions at this point?
Thank you. All right, any other department heads or elected officials which provide an update this morning? No, we'll move on to the minutes approved for the November twenty-six, twenty twenty-four meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion of questions. Hearing none, all those in favor, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, minutes are approved. We will have four hearings coming up later in the meeting. One on the Pikecrest Veterans Affairs renovation, one on the courthouse IT server room update project, one on the Pikecrest HVAC improvement project, one on the jail base and HVAC improvement project. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. This will be approved with a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion, questions? Hearing none, this is resolution. Roll call, please, Ms. Scholwenger.
Paul.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, resolution is approved. We'll move on to other business. Item A, this is a resolution with the suspension requested by Cassandra Little on taxes owed for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five installment. The amount of four hundred twenty-seven dollars in parcel number eight nine one three dash two seven dash four two nine dash oh oh one for sidewalk repair be approved pursuant to section four two seven point eight of the Code of Iowa. And county treasurer be authorized and directed to adjust her records accordingly.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is resolution. Roll call, please, Ms. Scholwenger.
Little.
Abstained.
Tralka.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, resolution is approved. Item D, this is a motion that upon the retirement of Deputy Matt Reams on December twenty, twenty twenty-four, he be gifted his duty service weapon as is the policy of Blackhawk County. To gift a deputy sheriff with his duty service weapon, provided he leaves the county in good standing and through voluntary requirement in accordance with the Iowa Public Employees Retirement System established guidelines and regulations.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a motion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item C, this is a motion that upon retirement of Deputy Jason Hines on December twentieth, twenty twenty-four, he be gifted his duty service weapon as the policy of Blackhawk County. To gift a deputy with his duty service weapon, provided he leaves the county employment in good standing through voluntary retirement in accordance with the IFRS established guidelines and regulations.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item D, this is a motion that upon the retirement of Deputy Wayne Slidos on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, he be gifted his duty service weapon, as is the policy of Blackhawk County, to gift a deputy with his sheriff or his duty service.
Abstained.
Uh, provided he leaves the county in good employment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item E, this is a motion to approve the advertisement for the opening on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item F, this is a motion request for purchase capital equipment submitted by LU Information Technology Director be approved and directed Chair to sign for the same. Purchase seven battery backup systems, including delivery and installation, amount twenty thousand, six hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty cents from Secure Test Technology of Union Town, Ohio. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Al?
Morning, Board, LU IT Director. This is a kind of an addition to a project that's already, hasn't started yet, but it's been planned for sometime this, beginning this month. And it was an item that was kinda overlooked in the planning stages from before. So what these are are battery backups for the equipment that will be installed in the jail here soon. They are essential to keep the equipment alive. Any questions?
Were they something we've always needed, it's just that we overlooked.
Correct.
Just get that, they need to be replaced.
There's already some in the network racks in the jail, they're just really outdated. They're seven years old, going on seven years old, so they really don't hold, hold a charge very well, so kinda defeats the purpose, so we'll have to make sure we can.
Expect the lifespan, you says?
Depends on the battery and other factors, but typically five-ish years is what I give most battery factors. Sometimes seven.
So every five years, we should.
All right, any further discussion or questions?
I think there was a question earlier about how they'd be paid for.
Yeah, I sent that on that.
Yeah.
So this is part of a bigger project, like I said, we kind of overlooked this part of it. The Board has already approved the funding on that, or the ARPA on it. This additional part, it is an amendment to the original contract, so I obviously wanted to bring it back to you. But I can cover this through the commissary account, so it won't cost anything additional on the Board's end. We just wanted your approval to amend the contract, and then I'll cover the cost of it.
I love that you're like, ARPA didn't cover it, so since it didn't request it early on.
I mean, obviously, it.
We're good.
Could go on their phone and go back in a minute, but we'll just make it easy, and I'll cover this part of it.
Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, this is a motion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item G, resolution with the lowest responsible bid received from Peterson Contractors, appropriate of Ryanbeck, Iowa, for project LFM dash five oh two nine, seven X dash oh seven, shoulder grading on Brandon Road in Blackhawk County with a total bid of a hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars, ninety, nine hundred twenty-nine, uh, nine hundred forty-five dollars and ten cents. Be awarded and directed Chair to sign resolution, authorizing the county engineer. Sign the contract and receive a place on file, contractor's bid and certificate of insurance as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Kathy?
Yes, this is a small regrading project where we are going to be moving the ditch approximately ten to fifteen feet to the north along about twenty-five hundred feet of Brandon Road. The ditch is just getting too close to the roadway. It's not a safe, or it could be an unsafe situation if it continues to erode. So as you know, last week in the board room, we did open bids, we had a good response, we had six, six bidders, and I would recommend that you award it to PCD, they were the low bid, and of course, they can work for us in the past. This funding would be from a little collection sales tax.
All right, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is resolution. Roll call, please, Ms. Scholwenger.
Tralka.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, resolution is approved. Item H, this is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise her public hearing slash bid opening. Be held at nine oh five AM on January seventh, twenty twenty-five. Boardroom two oh one of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, three sixteen East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa, to open bids on proposed project L dash three oh, three seven, bridge repairs on Fordway Road Bridge, eight nine dash eleven, eight nine dash eleven dash three one dash oh two dash ten.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Uh, this will allow us to repair that small structure that was damaged in September, so we had to close the bridge. Uh, we would like to buy some type of prefabricated bridge deck and just build it ourselves and replace the existing closed structure. This will allow us to send out the plans now that we've set here. Send out the patrol, excuse me.
Any further discussion or questions? This is a motion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, item I, this is a resolution that the amended service agreement between Blackhawk County and Wind Street providing phone services at a monthly cost of eleven thousand, uh, forty-six dollars and eight cents be approved for the Chair to sign and recommended by Rory Giving, Facilities Director.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
An amendment to an amendment?
Good morning, Board. Rory Giving, Facilities Director. I do wanna note that the, the cost is incorrect as stated on the agenda. That was actually the amendment last week that we had presented. So the new cost is going to be eleven thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eight cents. That is an additional five hundred and ninety-three dollars per month. But we did add, as instructed by the Board, we did add the EMA Center, Harpene Reserve Nature Center, Longfellow Road Shop, County Conservationation Headquarters, and the Juvenile Court Services. So moved. Yes. Board, any further discussion or questions?
Just one question I had, because on that service agreement, it also says effective date was November twenty-sixth. I guess since we're not approving it till today, it'd probably be effective.
Yeah, we should probably make that correction as well. Thank you.
Glad we caught those all, Board, and get them all approved.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me, Rory. You still there? This is Jeremy with Wind Street. The effective date is actually the day it installs and activates, so the effective date does, it's not gonna be reflected on the contract itself, on the agreement. It actually happens the day it actually activates. Does that make, does that part make sense?
Yeah, and I believe we stated last week that that was sixty to ninety days.
Correct.
Yes. Do we want to clarify that verbiage then in the lease agreement, just to state that it would be effective at the time of installation?
It does say that in the Ts and Cs that are either linked in the contract or on the contract itself. I'm not sure if you have the long form or the, the short form with a link to our Ts and Cs, terms and conditions.
Not in front of me, no.
So then that contract term length goes into effect date of installation?
Yes.
Date of full completed installation, 'cause I know there was, there was a conversation of sort of being a rolling installation.
It is a rolling installation, so it's going to be the date of accepted installation. So the, the, the day that you accept, you'll, you'll have an email or it'll be a phone call, one of the two, with your project coordinator that'll say, do you accept? Yes, I do accept services, and that's the day that it starts.
Service.
Any further discussion or questions? This is a resolution. Roll call, please, Ms. Scholwenger.
Leyland.
Yes.
Paul.
Yep.
Little.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, resolution is approved. Item J, discussion possible board action, body worn and in-camera systems and tasers. Uh, the motion to direct the county auditor to advertise her public hearing. Be held at nine oh five AM on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Boardroom two oh one of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, three sixteen East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa, on the proposed lease for body worn and in-camera systems and tasers.
Now, I've placed this item on the agenda because I thought the Board might want to protect our future taxing ability. This potentially allow you to put this hopefully under the debt service levy. There's some question whether that's allowable now, but this felt like the most defensive action to take. We, as you remember, you have agreed to fund seven hundred and fifty thousand of this two million dollar project roughly using ARPA replacement revenue, but the total contract is nearly two, so we're funding approximately half of it, not quite. Through ARPA, we will need a way to fund the remaining balance once we've exhausted the ARPA funds, so I just was, I don't know whether we'll need to use it or not, we'll address that when the date comes. But the idea is if we follow the correct steps now to do it, it would allow us flexibility in the future to do that, should you choose to.
Just to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just a, a refresher, the ARPA funds that are used, that seven hundred and fifty, that's lost revenue, or is that scored?
It's lost revenue, yeah, does not qualify as an ARPA contract.
So then we don't have to be specific with having that contract signed and in place and.
Correct, that was.
The first that we do with most of them.
Yes.
And I know in your email, 'cause I was, that's a question I was gonna ask you. I said, I know we have used debt service levy before, and I've kind of looked at it, like for buying down the taxes, the tax rates. So we don't, we can decide at the time we'd have that amount, whether or not we wanna do it.
Correct, yes, we'll, we'll make that choice and we'll work through the budgets for that particular year when that happens.
So, and it would only be looked at probably each year at a time, in case we'd have some reason to. More for, maybe, or something that changes.
Yes, I, I think that's true.
I really appreciate your efforts, looking forward to making sure we've got different options in the future, so really good work on this.
So we need to go forward on the seventeenth, but not necessarily for the date, time.
Right, but.
Just going.
Yes, I, other staff has said. Right, but, yes, I, other staff has said that they wanted to finish this in December, so that's why I wanted to get the date of hearing set, because we need to publish that, there's just a timeline. If we're going to do the hearing, so I wanted to make sure to have the hearing prior to the end of December, and you can choose whether you're gonna do it or not do it, whatever, or even sign the agreement, that's all.
Because we can go ahead with the lease without agreeing to do that yet, and still look at the year, kind of look at the funding. And then I know earlier on, we hadn't approved the tasers as part of this project, that's something that we could be doing, though we're looking at this one project.
I, I think that will work best, the equipment all works together and it's all kind of similar, so it, it makes sense, I think, to consider it all together. And there was a discount, slight discount on the contract if you did that.
With the same finish, unfortunately, only a hundred.
Only, only one difference.
Only one vendor that did, yeah.
So moved. So moved. So moved.
Okay.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion or questions? All right, uh, this is a motion, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries. It is now, uh, nine, uh, fifty-two AM, this is a hearing, uh, for the proposed project Pinecrest slash Veterans Affairs renovation versus a motion to receive and place and file proof of publication or notice of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, um, next is a motion, uh, to close the hearing after oral and written comments are received.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, um, any written comments, Ms. Scholter?
No written comments.
Correct, any oral comments?
Yeah, one order.
They're fine, they're fine.
Uh, duly noted, um, all right, uh, any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, uh, next is the bids to be read, um, the letting was held on November eighth, twenty twenty-four, at two PM.
You want one of us to do it?
All right, um, so, we did receive for this project, we received, uh, three bids, uh, Peters Construction, uh, base amount, uh, four nine, five eight two seven zero, all alternates, all in, was five nine six one four. Larson Construction, all in, five nine eight five, zero zero zero. Cardinal, six, zero seven six, zero zero zero.
Very good. All right, now, so I don't think we, don't take any action now, but, so, uh, next is item L, it is now, um, nine, uh, fifty-nine, or fifty-four. Um, and this is, uh, hearing, uh, through the proposed project courthouse IT, uh, server room.
So moved.
Second.
The motion received and place of file of publication or is a public hearing? Take that motion and second.
Yes, yep, sorry.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed.
Aye.
The motion carries, uh, next is a motion to close the hearing after oral and written comments are received.
So moved.
Second.
Any written comments, Ms. Scholter?
No.
All right, any oral comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All's, all's opposed, same sign, motion carries, next is the bids, is, is to be read, the letting was held on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, at two PM.
One bid was received from Peters Construction, four hundred thirty thousand, nine hundred thirty dollars, four three zero, nine three zero.
All right, thank you. Um, next is the item M, it is now, uh, nine fifty-five AM, this is a motion received, uh, this is the hearing on the proposed project, uh, Pinecrest HVAC Improvement Project, uh, motion, uh, to receive and place and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, all is in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Um, item two, this is a motion to close the hearing after oral and written comments are received.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, any written comments, Ms. Scholter?
No written comments.
Uh, any oral comments today? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the hearing's closed, uh, next, uh, bids to be read, uh, the letting was held on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, at two PM.
We received, uh, two bids, uh, Peters Construction, uh, in the amount of two nine four nine eight four eight, that includes a alternate of sixty-nine eight seventy. We received a bid from Young's Plumbing and Heating for two nine eight six zero zero zero, and that includes an alternate of seventy-two thousand. And I'd like to just explain, uh, this alternate, uh, this alternate was put in, um, in the, uh, chance that, uh, the alternate number seven identified under the Pinecrest VA project bid tab, uh, and the chance that that was not approved, this alternate would, uh, pick up the, uh, FAMTOY units that are located, uh, in the, uh, restrooms. And so consequently, if, uh, alternate number seven is approved, then this alternate amount would drop off.
All right. Uh, next we'll move on to item nine, it is now nine fifty-six AM. This is motion received and place of file, or, uh, first, this is a hearing for the proposed jail, uh, BAS and HVAC Improvement Project. Motion received and place on file, uh, proof of publication, notice of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries, uh, next is a motion to close the, the hearing after oral and written comments are received.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, any written comments, Ms. Scholter?
No written comments.
Uh, any oral comments today? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the hearing is closed, next is the bid to be, bids to be read, uh, the letting was held on November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, at two PM.
Okay, we've received, uh, two bids, uh, Plum Tech, one eight nine six nine zero zero. And Young's, one eight seven eight zero zero zero.
All right, very good, thank you. Next we'll move on to item ten, this is discussion, the status of ARPA funding.
All right. Let me get to, if I can. For my screen. Some reason I have a very small screen, I don't know why. I don't know how much review you want to have, I, I have one worksheet that will review all the bids from this morning. Well, not all the bids, but the bid being recommended and with the alternates, so that you can just see the impact. And these were, these were sent out to earlier. We had a number of alternates for the VA and Pinecrest renovations that we are, that are, they're all listed on here. And then, we, we also included, I, I wanted to be sure to provide full disclosure, we do have the architects have recommended contingency amounts, so I've included those. There are also certain things in the contract that will be determined as construction proceeds, and I refer those as construction allowances. Because we won't decide those by December thirty-first, I, I have to move those to the replacement revenue category, so you will see lines on here just flip-flopping the source of funding, we're, we're going, those are part of the base contract, so we will do them, we're just paying for them in a different way. Um, we also included soft cost contingencies for fee printing, other things that come up. I'm hoping those are high, so we should have a little bit of savings in those as we proceed through these projects. So, when we get to the bottom of all those, the other item I did include on here, we, we could allow, we have an estimate for furniture, because if we're going to provide new, um, buildings, we, we need to furnish those, and those, that is an estimate that's again been provided by the architect, they are not ready to bid those yet, so those, again, will be funded using replacement revenue. And I've also included fifty thousand dollars for the Veterans Affairs parking lot, that was not an item, it's not probably appropriate to include that in a construction contract, so we're recommending that be done separately, but we feel it's important to do that around that new facility. And Rory certainly is the expert on all that, not me. So the total estimated project costs of the four projects that we had the hearings on this morning is twelve, just over twelve million dollars. Of that twelve million, almost eight point four is eligible for the ARPA expense category funding, and three point six five would need to come from the replacement revenue category. So when we look at the ARPA funding that's available today, we have a total of eleven million, just over eleven million dollars that's not been committed to another project. Of that, we have just under six million available in the ARPA expense category. So if you choose to fund everything that's eligible for ARPA expense category, we will, we still have to fund a portion of that using replacement revenue, because we're gonna use up all the ARPA expense category funding, approximately two point four million of that. Um, so when I move that over to the replacement revenue category, we will be short, as a whole, out of the twelve million, we're short just over one million, one million twenty-one thousand. And that certainly could be funded with reserves, or we can choose not to fund all of the alternates. And the contingencies, maybe we won't need all those, there, there's a lot of ifs in here right now, because we're still not quite to the starting line, but the great news is we will obligate, assuming that you award contracts before the end of December, we will obligate all our ARPA expense category funding, which was my goal, we don't want to have to return any of that to treasury, and I, I believe today you will be able to meet that obligation.
And all the resolutions today include all the alternates, correct?
I, yes. I know there, and I think Rory, do you want to talk about the alternates, or if you would like, I don't know if you're interested in looking at the details of how it got to that ARPA funding. I will say, though, it does, if you've noticed, it does still include the taser option in the replacement revenue, and that's nearly three hundred thousand. So if you somehow chose not to fund that using the replacement revenue, that also relieves that fund balance. From using a million would drop it to about seven hundred thousand use of fund balance. And I, if, are there questions?
Well, I think, I think this is pretty good, I'm gonna support all these resolutions today. I think it's, I appreciate all the work over these years that's gotten us to this point, it's, um.
You were nervous.
Yes.
But I think we made it.
But I think that since we kind of slowed down and took our time, that we're really getting the maximum benefit out of these federal dollars. Um, this might have been a once in a generation opportunity for the county, and, um, we could have just rushed and put it all into one project, as some places did, and some of them were great projects. Um, but we really have touched pretty much all aspects of the county, uh, which is really excellent.
Were there any recommendations or things that you'd wanted us to take a look at?
Well, I, I, yeah, I, I did want to point out, uh, alternate number five, the solar array, and, uh, as you know, we, uh, we've been working with, uh, Mid-American Energy, and they've developed what's called a baseline, uh, energy cost for that facility, uh, with the equipment that's, uh, that's engineered to go in there, uh, we had a baseline of ten thousand per year, ten thousand dollars a year. With the new equipment, that brings it down to roughly, uh, seven thousand. So when you look at that solar cost at four hundred and forty-four thousand, um, even after you get the thirty percent tax credits, uh, that does put us a little north of thirty-year payback on that, and so I wanted to point that out to the board today, 'cause that is a, uh, uh, I think a significance, um, with the project, we are looking at, uh, uh, setting the building up conduit-wise, uh, if the board chose not to go with solar today, uh, that portion would still be completed, so if we wanted to entertain solar down the road, uh, that portion would be all taken care of under this project, and it would just be, uh, tying in the new solar array system. Uh, so I just wanted to bring that, uh, in front of you, because that is a pretty likely, uh, payback period, um. One suggestion might be, uh, looking that, at that as a separate project, possibly, uh, maybe trying to get a better, better, better rate.
Is there a reason it's so hot, I mean, for the size of the building it is, four hundred fifty K is pretty sizable?
There had to be some estimates put in, uh, when the original design was put together, and so there's estimated, uh, energy costs for that facility. Um, I believe that came in around a hundred and fifty KW, um, so looking at that size of a system, uh, that's what we had to put out there, uh, for the contractors to bid on, um, after Mid-American came in, did their study, uh, that did lower, uh, what their outlook is, what their baseline is to, uh, I want to say roughly sixty KW, uh, if I'm not mistaken. Um, so that is a significant difference of, of, of what was actually put in the, uh, the bid package and what, uh, Mid-American is telling us that we could, uh, see on this facility, so, uh, that's a little concerning to me. Um, so I just wanted to bring that up today, I know this is ARPA dollars, um, we are over, uh, a bit, um, I would certainly, uh, welcome the idea of looking at this as a separate project, uh, after maybe we get some time under our belt, uh, with that facility to see what those annual costs really are, um, and then you could, uh, uh, size that system more appropriately. I just, I, I felt like I needed to bring that, uh, to your attention, so I, I don't mean to, uh, uh, to be a negative here, but, uh, 'cause I am pro-solar, uh, but, uh, it does have to make sense, and, and, uh, I feel that as a long payback period, and, and you need to know that.
You said it's originally spec'd out at a hundred and fifty kilowatt?
Just under, like, a hundred and forty-eight, I believe.
Well, Mid-American came in at sixty, or projected sixty.
So if you choose not to fund that alternate today, that would bring the reserves down to five hundred and seven.
And then maybe depending on how we move with taser, some additional flexibility?
Right, that would, yeah, because that would then bring it down to only two, right, so you're basically even, but we do have reserves, so.
Is there anything else in the, I mean, that one jumps out, eh, but is there anything else there as far as recommendations?
Uh, just what I had mentioned earlier, um, with the, uh, alternate number seven, if the board, if you choose not to go with number seven, then that has an impact on the HVAC, uh, proposal, um, that would include that alternate. If you choose to go with number seven, then that drops off, so that would, uh, lower that, uh, amount. Other than that, I, uh, the snow melt, uh, did come in, uh, somewhat higher than we anticipated. Uh, we, uh, did ask the engineers to give us a expected life, and they, uh, came back at fifteen to twenty-year, uh, expected life for that system.
And that's just for the three, that certain area sidewalk, though, it's not?
That is basically the entryway, uh, to the, it's, I, I want to say it's roughly, uh, three hundred square feet of sidewalk.
And when we looked at that, what was our reasons for that?
And when we looked at that, what was our reasons for that?
Just taking advantage of the new construction, um just minimizing slip trips, falls, uh uh just seeing some of the concrete degradation that we see at some of our other facilities that would help us uh prolong the life of the concrete by not having to add as much salt and sand.
And labor?
Hmm?
And the labor to
Yeah.
Here, the snow.
Um yeah, uh you'll see uh as we move forward, my recommendation uh is on on file for the uh all alternates to be included, so that's all in. So that five point uh nine million, that is a considering all alternates to be approved.
But your recommendation right now would be to keep them all in except for the solar?
I I just, I feel like that uh payback gets us too close to the end of the useful life of the system uh to really see benefit from it. And so I would like the opportunity to go back and uh look at that as a separate project. And I think I could come back with better fine-tuned numbers. I believe that during this project, if we could stub the electrical out so it's all ready to go, uh that's gonna definitely help us uh moving forward. And beings that we are over a million and uh we're asking to pull that out of reserves, I just feel like uh that would be an opportunity missed uh if we did go with solar today.
I mean, I'm comfortable with making sure that the system's right-sized. I I I don't wanna I don't wanna put a Lamborghini in a one-stall garage. Um um so, yeah, I'm 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 comfortable with with pulling back on it for now. No, while stating that I'm fully committed to solar
Yeah.
on the building. I just wanna make sure that we're not putting something that's frankly just too, that's too much.
Or at least looking at it, I mean, later we could find out, I suppose, if it's too cost prohibitive too, but
Correct, yeah.
Still consider it.
I I know I had questioned the the cost of the system compared to what we had paid on others, you know, knowing that things went up, but it's I mean, how soon could we rebid it with um taking into account Mid-America's estimate on the actual energy? Yeah, if we used Mid-American's baseline, uh I believe that uh we could uh, I don't believe we could get it turned around before the end of the year, but I think we could get moving on it sooner than later, and I could certainly put it in as a a budget request um in the next few weeks as we start talking, you know, next fiscal year. We've already made contact with the local solar company here in town. Uh again, that was based on the original assumption of what the utility usage was going to be. Um so now that we have this uh baseline from Mid-American, uh if we choose not to see what the actuals are after a year, if we wanna do it sooner, then we could use that baseline, which is going to turn the system down and ultimately uh lower that cost.
That was good. Uh is that a new program, or it was just something that came to our attention, the Mid-Am?
Uh no, it's not necessarily new. We've done it with other projects. Um it's a uh consulting firm that Mid-American uses uh to just look at uh energy efficiencies.
But I think it's only been in the last week or two, we were
Oh, for this particular one.
For this and the benefit.
It it started uh some time ago, but it just kinda came together as as it just took some time. Uh so in order to get the uh bid package out, we had to make some assumptions. Is there anything you wanna add? The typical warranty period is what, twenty-five years? I believe when we did the uh Pinecrest and the other six locations, it was twenty, twenty-five years. That's an estimated forty-year lifespan in the mules? Yes. And we did, uh for that particular system, we did pay a uh extra for an extended uh warranty period to get us up to that twenty-five on the inverters, if you recall. And again, the estimates used in the bid were a hundred fifty kilowatts, but
Yep.
Yeah.
So we can't take motion unless there's just a status of ARPA funding, so it comes in hearings that follow.
Next, yes, and if you, I have the numbers, if you do
Okay.
wanna exclude the one alternate, if you wanna exclude multiple alternates, I'll have to work with those numbers.
Um how do you want? I'm fine with accepting everything except alternate five, which is the solar, but that's just my I can wait till the hearing actually, the state says we need to, I guess, or wherever you wanna do it. No snow melt, we've never done that anywhere else, have we? It's just, there's the no snow melt sidewalk project, so we
We we actually have a system here uh in the vestibule. Uh it's a hydronic system. This is gonna be an electric uh system. And uh we chose to go electric uh because of the nature of the building, it is going to be all electric, and that's that's what was appealing for the solar field as well, so.
Mike, do you have anything to add? I mean, other businesses that have utilized this, how good it is, but I mean, issues, concerns, life expectancy, I guess.
Yeah, Mike broke a with Monis. Uh yeah, traditionally, we we have used no melt uh in the Waterloo Cedar Falls area. We would, our preference would be the hydronic would be our first preference, just because of the pipe material. Uh we have had had used the the electric as well. It, like Rory said, the life of the electric is not as long as the hydronic, but it's it's it generally is get you that fifteen to twenty years. Obviously, there's there's some factors involved in that, so this is kind of all relative. But um there is, it would be uh extremely expensive if it was a hydronic system in this application. It's the reason why it 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 went electric.
Is it something we could come back and do at a later date too? Or is this kind of a need?
Well, you'd have to, you'd have to tear up the concrete, the sidewalk.
Well, that's what I mean. Right now, the concrete's in pretty good condition.
Well, right now, it's it's gonna be replaced.
Okay.
It's gonna be totally new, so that gives us the opportunity of installing this. Yep.
I guess on the the solar, like I, cause I I wanna see that that building be solar, the entire campus over there is solar. Um could we be setting this out for bid using the Mid-America numbers or slightly above the Mid-America number again in January? To to be keeping this moving forward? I I I think uh using the baseline, I wouldn't uh want to set ourselves short, but if we used the baseline and maybe even added a five, ten percent onto that, just to cover ourselves, um yeah, I think we could put something together pretty quickly.
Yeah, the, yeah, I I'll chime in. We uh like Rory stated, we had to make some estimates really on to get an idea. And the request was is that we wanted to to have a net zero building. And so you you, there's there's several factors, and it's about how the building is gonna get used. We have this new new HVAC system that's that's efficient. We have a new lighting system that's gonna be all LED, that's efficient. Uh we also have a kitchen. We also have uh people using the building that are gonna use electricity, and that's an unknown. And we, at the time of putting the documents together, we had to make some assumptions and and uh knowing that the the primary goal was to be to be net zero, that's that's the assumption that we had to make. Now, with with this current information, yes, now we could work work closer with Mid-Am and 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 hopefully bring that that number down considerably, but
How do you, how do you feel about the number from Mid-American?
I had, I have not, we have not quite honestly analyzed that number.
Alright, is there anything else in the discussion part?
Anything else, has anybody any options that anybody else wanna consider or think about, or whatever, if otherwise, no?
Alright, we'll move on to section eleven, bids awarded. Um this first is a resolution with the lowest responsible bid received from Peterson Construction, Waterloo, Iowa for the Pinecrest Public Health Veterans Affairs Project, uh located in fourteen oh seven Independence Avenue, Waterloo, Iowa, with a bid of uh five million nine hundred thousand six hundred fourteen dollars. Be awarded and authorized chair, signed contract conditional on receipt of certificate of insurance as recommended by Facilities Director Rory Givitt.
The the amount, if you choose to exclude the solar alternate, that amount would be five million four hundred fifty-six thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars.
Say that one more time, sorry.
Five million four hundred fifty-six thousand six hundred fourteen.
I'll make a motion to do that, to exclude that at this time.
Second it. There's a motion on in a second, um on the amended amount. Do we have to vote on this amended amount? There wasn't a motion already, makes us just one resolution.
Just excluding the number is good enough?
I believe the only one I heard was for the uh
Yeah.
It's for the amendment.
Yeah.
So that's that's what you're voting on.
Yeah.
Five million four fifty-six.
Yeah. And I'll I'll just state again that I wanna see us going out to bid again in January, um on a modified kilowatt number.
I I reiterate that I don't want this to just be us kicking the can down the road, not addressing it. Um like certainly a priority, it's just a matter of making sure it's right-sized.
Reviewing it. I'm I'm open to review of it later, just like you said, not to kick the can down the road, just to make sure we take another one. Not so committed to it till I see the cost.
Is there any further discussion or questions to this resolution? Hearing none, uh roll call please, Ms. Joel Water.
Little.
Yes.
Troca. Leyland?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Little, arms for shorts.
Yes, resolution's approved. Um item B, this is resolution of the lowest responsible bid received from Peterson Construction, Waterloo, Iowa for the courthouse server room upgrade project located at three sixteen East First Street. Waterloo, Iowa, the bid of four hundred thirty-three thousand nine hundred thirty dollars. Be awarded and authorized chair to sign the contract conditional on receipt of certificate of insurance as recommended by Facilities Director Rory Givitt.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions? Uh does the board have any questions on this project?
Maybe Kevin's the only one that had the change.
Well, there will be one more next time.
Oh, good, but not on this one.
Okay.
Oh.
Alright, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call please, Ms. Joel Water.
Troca. Leyland?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Horts?
Yes, resolution's approved. Um item C, this is resolution of the lowest uh reasonable bid received from Peterson Construction, Waterloo, Iowa for the Pinecrest HVAC Improvement Project located at Pinecrest Campus, fourteen oh seven Independence Avenue, Waterloo, Iowa, with a bid of two million nine hundred forty thousand eight hundred forty-eight dollars. Uh be awarded and authorized chair, the signed contract conditional on receipt of certificate of insurance as recommended by Rory Givitt, Facilities Director. So moved.
So this one, because you did elect to fund up so then, I believe?
Yeah.
Alternate seven in the health department, then we can drop off the alternate from this one. So the revised amount of this contract would be two million eight hundred seventy-nine thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars.
Alright, do we have a a motion reflecting the the alternate amount? So moved. Alright, so again, the this resolution that um you know, the amount is two million eight hundred seventy-nine thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, uh
This is amended?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, this is resolution, uh roll call please, Ms. Joel Water.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Horts?
Yes, resolution's approved. Um item D, this is resolution of the lowest uh reasonable bid uh received from Young Plumbing and Heating, Waterloo, Iowa, for the JL VAS and Kitchen HVAC Improvement Project located at the Black Heart County Sheriff's Office, two twenty-five East Sixth Street, Waterloo, Iowa, with a bid of one million eight hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars. Uh be awarded and authorized the chair to sign the contract conditional on receipt of certificate of insurance as recommended by Rory Givitt, uh Facilities Director. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call please, Ms. Joel Water.
Leyland?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Horts?
Yes, resolution's approved. Of item twelve, any reports or information from the board?
Just a reminder, our strategic planning session's been one to four thirty today. I don't know if anybody needs reminding of it.
Alright, uh I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
It's been a while.
Thank you, everyone.